Test, test, Joe, can you hear me?
We can hear you in the Zoom session.
Testing. Good evening. The time is six o'clock. We, and today is Tuesday, February 1st. We are in our special meeting for the purpose of discussing the items on the agenda. There are two items. Present in the boardroom, we have members Lessons, Jacobs, Donley, and Bellamy. Online, we have member Wilson. And we will update our attendance as board members either get online or join us in the boardroom. All right. With that, we'll start our session. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. The team and I and extended team, we're all here to share with you the budget that we've collectively put together that focuses on the goals and guardrails as well as really meets the mark for having a balanced budget. Throughout it, we're going to really start with a larger frame of the timeline and then move to just the different functions of how it was put together so that we create a mind's eye in understanding the interconnectedness of the different pieces of the puzzle. It's a complex document. So we wanted to really break it down and have really some visuals that'll bring it to light. We will share with you some graphs financially of where we stand and then literally move into what do those revenue then look like in our classrooms and our schools? And so we'll present. We did a dry run today and took questions and saved them to the end. And I wanted to know, Madam President, if that the each slide, you have a copy before you also has a number at the bottom of it that if questions wanted to be, we could go through and then save the questions for afterwards. That might help with the flow because sometimes when we had questions in the middle, the next slide or two answered the questions. And so since it's the first time, we can go through. But if you have a question, please reference the slide. And then for the audience, those online watching, we can pull it right back up so that when the question and the discussion and dialogue happened, that we'll be all looking at the same thing. So is that good?
That sounds good. Let's do the presentation and we'll hold our questions until the end.
All right, so we will begin with the timeline. I'll turn it over to Jim Anderson.
Good evening. I think everyone's pretty comfortable with the timeline. We've been working on this for a while. We did the school and department budget item detail requests, November, December, and naturally we've been working it for the past month, pulling this together. So tonight is one February. It will be non-action on eight February and then action item on the 22nd. We will start tomorrow with one-on-one briefings with the board members. At this point, I think we only have three scheduled. So we're still looking to schedule the rest of those briefs. When we do the one-on-ones, we'll also have the appendix C. So you'll see a slide here that that kind of rolls up all the changes. But for those who are have done one-on-ones before, when we do that, we'll give you the appendix C, which is every change year over year. And we'll also provide that all of the S R three details while this brief is a little more 30,000 foot level. So we'll provide all that to each board member and be respond to your questions. And I'm sure the questions will continue after that. And I will be followed by Dr. Bishop.
Okay, so in that 30,000 foot view to understand what we've done with this budget is we addressed the general fund deficit. We do know, and we actually clarified and really worked with our principals in discussing this, the difference between revenue and then understanding how the general fund through the BSA is flat funded. The, in December, and Jim will touch on this again, we had a pro forma which demonstrated a large deficit. That is a true deficit given the general fund operational monies. However, as you'll see in this presentation, we really are filling the gaps year after year after year kind of on borrowed time with outside the formula money and federal funds. And so the bigger picture is about the general fund and addressing its deficit. And we do address it in this brief. But you'll see how that is a difficult solution because it is just year to year. We did prioritize pupil teacher ratios and maintain educational programs. You'll see the effective use of S R funds to maximize the recovery from COVID-19 as well as filling that general fund gap. We will demonstrate a redirection of resources to focus on board goals as well as some redesigns within the system already to focus on learning and the gaps that we have with students. Everything points back to what the board has already stated in its values and beliefs. So nothing that we're presenting to you is not linked. It is all linked and in a cogent manner to the board goals and guardrails as well, as well as the core values and beliefs. And those are, and you can look on your website, you know, the potential. We, we absolutely know that every student deserves an opportunity for achievement. There are high expectations and we want to create a culture of high expectations demonstrated through accountability and being transparent to our public. Also focus on safety and responsiveness in this ever-changing world. The next slide really demonstrates how are we tying these things together? How is the big puzzle put together with all the different pieces? Or some others use the connect the dots? How do we connect the dots of all the different functions in the complex system that we have? So when you think about the potential, of course, the reading, math, college, career, life ready, and really investing in CTE programs. We continue high expectations through your outcomes, the expectation of outcomes and monitoring those. The accountability, as you know, we have refined dashboards. They're very transparent. And on that accountability as well, we want to be accountable to our people. And so we have shared an advanced and enhanced benefits program. For safety, we not only have the safety of facility where you'll see air quality in our buildings and the safety in regard to communications, but also improving the district's mental health and physical health. And continuation of the School Resource Officer program falls in line with our mental health and safety actions. responsiveness, we have expanded the ability to communicate with our public and internally and externally, as well as the aspects of the educational planning through the pandemic that certainly demonstrated responsiveness and continuation of responsiveness, given the choice of programs. I'm going to turn it over to Mark to really share how these actions are connected through a task force, which is involves really putting actions towards the goals and guardrails.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. In addition to the core values and beliefs, put it right up here. In addition to the core values and beliefs, the budgets also represent the goals and the initiatives of the district. As you all know, at ASD, our initiatives and our goals are represented in the board's goals and guardrails. And so it's important to note that while the board goals and guardrails do not represent the only things that are district values, they do represent current priorities in a current state. And therefore, they're embodied in their strategic goals and plans that we'll discuss. The next three slides are going to show how these initiatives are represented in the budget planning. This particular slide shows the various working groups that have been developing project charters, goals, timelines, action plans, all of it through work with our project management staff. These working groups have teachers and administrators across various grade spans that have content area expertise in these areas. And they're developing initiatives that would advance those goals and guardrails. As you're aware, the three main planning groups were college, career, and life, and reading and math, and the group also with guardrails. The other groups you see here represented around the graphic are the operations and budget and outcome monitoring. And those are groups that are supporting the work that's going on in the other groups. Part of aligning this work involves aligning the resources and budget to those priorities. And just due to the sheer amount of state, local, and federal grants and all the various funding sources and all the thousands of account codes that go with all of those funding sources, the complexity increases exponentially. This next slide, Jim Anderson will provide a little insight into those funding sources.
So about nine months ago or so, we started the strategic plans task force that Mark talked about. And by middle, late summer, really these new initiatives and potential options really started to, to come together. We, we obviously couldn't resource all of them. So they were prioritized based on their ability to meet defined, carefully defined goals and objectives. We made sure that they could be evaluated and assessed. And then we looked at the most appropriate funding source. When you look at this slide, you can see at the top, the general fund, transportation, to nutrition fund. Those are pretty easy to project on the grants, the local, state, and federal grants. Those actual amounts come in between springtime and, and late summer before we can finalize them. But, but basically, we looked at an initiative and said, is it short term? If it's, if it's long term, you know that you really want to try to find general funds. If it's truly short term, one time, then grant funds are the most appropriate source. So that's kind of how we looked at all of the initiatives that came in. Also, one thing you'll see on this next slide is that when we looked at the initiatives, we didn't have enough funding in any one stream to be able to meet all of the things that were brought up. So many of the initiatives, if not most of the initiatives, actually have multiple funding sources. So we built the following slide to try to give you a picture of how complicated it is to fund any of the initiatives you worked on.
So this slide provides an example of the complexity of cross categorical funding. And I think it's important to note that cross categorical funding is a, is an important tool in trying to advance our goals and priorities because it leverages many different funding sources and then many different account codes within those sources. As an example, if you'll see there, the reading goal pulled out of the little slide deck, and you'll see that with just reading alone, we can resource that through everything from the general fund to Title 1A, Title 2A, Title 3A, Title 4 state grants, even the municipal alcohol tax with funds for pre-K is designed to help support those reading goals, for example. And this just tries to illustrate the need for aligning those resources from, from those funding streams. Many of you have heard of purchases around the Hegarty phonics, our intervention programs around what's called SIPs, springboard, fast bridge. All of these are things that the educators know very well of what they do, but they're all funded from very different sources coming from whatever we can put together that's available. In the general fund alone, there's example of multiple account codes that would cover reading goals, such as the reading curriculum purchases, reading teacher expert salaries, travel to reading conferences, lots of money for teacher addenda to teach the after-school tutoring programs and on and on. So there are hundreds of account lines that support these reading goals across multiple funding sources. And so the takeaway from this slide alone, the takeaway is that the budget really has to be considered as a whole. Any one-line item in this budget may cross multiple goals, multiple guardrails, and can't be looked at in isolation. This budget takes another step forward in trying to align our work with our resources to the goals. And that's really the function of all quality organizations is to try to, to use every resource you have available to align that work. And so at this point, Dr. Bishop will briefly review some of the goals real quick.
Thank you. So the beginning of this presentation was really to create that mind's eye of the back work that goes into the budget that you see before you. So we're going to start with your board goals and guardrails. And we don't need to spend much time on this slide alone because we know the reading proficiency, math proficiency in college, career, life ready. We have had monitoring updates in those areas as well as white papers in regard to the updates. And so we're going to dive a little bit deeper into each one of these. And again, to demonstrate just the interconnectedness, those online, as well as we have quite a bit of staff that they themselves are responsible for certain functions within the budget. And we invited them here tonight so that your questions could be asked specifically in regard to any one of these goals and guardrails. So they were delighted to be with us here. So I just want to thank again our staff who's just amazing. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mark, Dr. Stock.
Thank you. So the next two slides, we'll, we'll talk about reading and math. And Dr. Knutson will cover some of those, the major highlights. And we just tried to pull from our work just few of the major items to just show you in one, one small outline format. And then after that, Dr. Johnson will address the college, career, and life goal represented in the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. So as we look at the reading slide here, funding for district reading goal is really focused on four areas. And those are represented by the four blue lines that highlight those areas. First, a priority is supporting catch-up growth. And this is due to disruptions in teaching and learning during the pandemic. Catch-up growth occurs through focused, intensive reading interventions that occurred both during the school day and after the school day, as well as expanding preschools so that our students can have those exposure to early literacy skills and have that coming into kindergarten. The second area of focus is really core reading instruction. We know from research and our own experiences in the ASD that both focused, research-based core reading instruction is a necessary foundation for our students to make both annual growth, that year-to-year growth, as well as our catch-up growth. And this may be achieved through integrity of our core curriculum with the support of instructional coaching, as well as universal screening and data analysis. Third, prior to the pandemic, we were initiating implementation snapshots. And that was part of our program evaluation of reading to see if what we were doing is working. That was halted when the pandemic started, but we will be resuming that component of program evaluation. Our implementation snapshots, along with student learning data, will provide a broad district picture of implementation and really help us inform our adjustments that we need to make to the program. And then finally, in reading, we'll be continuing to invest in ongoing professional development on research-based reading instruction, database decision-making, and reading interventions for our new-to-district and our new-to-grade-level ASD teachers. As we go on to math, consistent with reading, funding for the math goal will focus on catch-up growth through high-quality core math instruction, robust interventions, program, intervention programs in summer school, thoughtful database decision-making, instructional coaching, and professional development. It is important to remember that while we started implementing systematic reading curriculum and instruction prior to the pandemic, this year, the 21, 22 school year was supposed to be our first district-wide implementation of our math curriculum. So teachers have used the I-Ready mathematics curriculum. They've had that, they've been working with kids. But given staffing limitations this year, we have really had to cut back on district-sponsored PD. It's been limited for our staff. And instructional coaches have not been consistently available to provide job embedded professional learning at schools, again, to help with that staffing and covering classrooms. So therefore, next year, we're going to have a renewed focus on our professional development with math as we move forward. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson now. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson now.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Knutson. So when we take a look at our college career life ready initiative and strategic plan, there are the, there are many different indicators that we're concentrating on within that that goal. But when it comes to the budget, we're focused on three main areas to really resource our our funding. The first area is to support access and equity for our college career life-ready opportunities for students. So sometimes when students come to us, there are some barriers for kids to access those opportunities, such as transportation being a big one. So finding ways to provide transportation for kids to all of those internships and job opportunities that we have within our system. The other focus area that is a big focus for us here at the beginning of our CCL initiative is looking at our career pathways and making sure that all of our kids around the district have a robust offering of career pathways within their their school. We're also looking at advising in the counseling departments within our secondary programs and giving them necessary professional development to the adults who are advising our kids within CCL. We're also really focused on just implementing the additional student learning opportunities within CCL as we move through this strategic plan. So we're looking, we've already started this process here and and we've provided a few of these updates through different board meetings. We're doing a lot of work through our inclusive practices at the secondary level. Where else you as a board have also adopted curriculum at the middle school level in math and language arts. And we're looking to extend those into high school for language arts in the near future. One of the other areas is looking at student computer platforms that really focus in on areas around CCL that can help advance this, these indicators forward for kids. And then just as a larger third category that we're really looking at is just support for the implementation of CCL. One of the main indicators in the life ready goal for CCL is a financial literacy component that will be in place for the next school year. And we've done the planning work this year, so there's funding support for that. And then we are wanting to stay on a trend and with the latest research around CCL initiatives. So we are participating in a national cohort to keep ourselves on the cutting edge around this work, and that's another support item as a part of this work as well. So and then there's just a lot of people involved in this work with throughout the district from the school level to the ed center. And so it's just lots of people looking at this and a part of the work, and that's part of the funding as well. So I will turn it back over to Dr. Bishop.
Thanks, Dr. Knutson. I mean, Dr. Johnson. Yeah. Dr. Johnson, lots of doctors out there. Sorry about that. I paused because I knew that my brain was moving. So right onto the guardrails. And again, remember, these are written in the same way as you could say the our bill of rights, what you should and shouldn't do, Congress may not. So the superintendent will not leave student groups underrepresented. Again, we know that we're developing a diverse and culturally responsive workforce, as well as not allowing unsatisfactory employee performance. Finally, operate elementary schools without mental health services. We will not do that. And so understanding those parameters, we have built this budget around ensuring that we do not violate your guardrails and move towards action in the district. And the action is described throughout the board guardrails next with turning it back over to Dr. Stock.
Thank you. So the of the four guardrails that are represented there in the large blue, blue lines, just a couple of key points. The first guardrail on underrepresentation in our lottery programs. These choice programs in our community are everyone's really proud of them. But what we noticed is that that they, because of things like lack of transportation and other things or other things we're not aware of, or maybe that some communities aren't aware of their choices that are there. How do we support that? It's so that we took the first step this spring of redesigning our software with a third party vendor to try to get baseline data on the application process. So we have data on who got in. We don't have data in the lottery on who the folks are that that are applying. So that's the first part. Second guardrail is found in multiple places in the budget, including some of the collaborative recruitment efforts that are going on in special education and in HR, some of the physicians that we've tried to work through to build recruitment around those hard to fill places. We've also got places in the budget that address incentives and bonuses for hard to fill positions in the district. So those are represented by that guardrail. The third one on employee performance, we've supported that one through some increased training and major efforts in supporting not only our certified supervisors, but our classified supervisors as well in dealing with employee issues. The fourth guardrail, I want to spend a little more time on because this one is one of the more significant ones that we're working on. The fourth guardrail has to do with the elementary mental health issues and even on a larger level, the whole K through pre-K through 12 mental health area. So one of the things we've done, we've begun some planning for district-wide integration of our ASD behavioral health services, examples like school psychologists, counselors, nursing, behavior strategists, our SEL work, which we've been well known for around the country, our crisis response and our safety and security programs, our community mental health services. You've been hearing about our partnerships with Volunteers of America, Providence Behavioral Health and Alaska Behavioral Health, just to name a few. And so our goal is to develop a strategic, multi-tiered system of supports around mental health that will enhance the board goals and student learning. And so in order to do that, we're looking at a bit of a shift in organizational leadership and department focus to support that. We've hired a senior director of mental health and student support with some of our grant funds that will take in effect July 1. After a series of interviews, our top candidate was Dr. Knutson, who has a school psychology background. We're excited that she's excited about moving into that arena. In addition to that, our new senior director for health services, Kate McClellan, who's over here, has a strong background in these areas of of social work and mental health. And so these two are partnering together and they will begin the collaboration phase. And we will do some reorganization. So under Dr. Knutson's work, we will reorganize some staff that has to do with the psychologists, the elementary counselors, the behavioral teams, our social emotional learning programs, which have been in the place for a long time, and our federal student support programs will fall under her. So we're still working on the details of how that org chart and all of that will play out, you know, later. But that position will take effect July 1. In addition, there's some strong support for behavioral issues. You're going to find that I'll cover later in the special services or special education budget. As you're well aware, that throughout the last couple of years, there increases in not only mental health issues, but just behaviorally in general. And so we will show you the addition of some behavior strategists at middle school and high school levels. And we'll try to begin coordinating those resources to support. So that's a review of the guardrails. And at this time, I think Dr. Bishop and Jim are going to talk a little bit about school funding since 2017.
All right. And and I'm going to start this with just acknowledging that in the rest of the country, tomorrow is Groundhog Day. Here in Alaska, it's Marmot Day. And it just reminds me of this section that we're about to begin because my experience in senior level leadership at a district in districts, this one, as well as our neighboring, really has been the last 16 years. And it seems as though the story is the same over and over again when we go to Juneau. And so we want to be crystal clear with the board, as well as the public, in understanding why that is, that school districts across our state continue to go down to Juneau and talk about funding. Many times we use the term flat funding, or we've been flat funded. Or it isn't necessarily true in that the revenue has been flat. Because as you can see, this graph demonstrates that there has been an influx of money, especially in the last FY22, money for next year and FY24. That's demonstrated, however, in federal one-time funds. And Jim will go into the specifics of the spending, understanding the timeline for which it has to be spent. Now, what has been apparent is that large blue line. So the reason we continue to go down and say the same things, and it seems like the same story is happening when we wake up again every spring, is because of that 5930. And Jim will really describe all the inputs that have gone into the budget and into the BSA as either operational funds, one-time monies, or grant funds. The red line is the inflation. And I, I doesn't translate exactly, but technically, we're living on borrowed time. We're living on borrowed money. We are living on credit in our school district. And so I want to be really crystal clear that in December, when we shared the pro forma with over $60 million in a delta, that this is why. So we're moving through and have a balanced budget next year without reductions. But the only reason why is the federal money. And so I'm going to turn it over to Jim to share that.
Thanks, Dr. Bishop. So this is, I think, our fourth iteration of of an attempt to show what the fiscal cliff looks like, when it, when we're going to see it, and how big is it? It also is an attempt to give the legislators their due. When we were talking to Juneau, they have given us money in one-time funding. It just didn't inflation proof the BSA. So if you look at this chart from top to bottom, left to right, the red line at the top of the chart depicts the BSA's inflationary increase based off Anchorage's CPIU from 2017 through 22. The rates from January 22 through the end of 24 are estimated at this time based on a 2% steady inflation rate. And they also reflect adjusted staffing levels based off projected student enrollment in those years. Above the dark blue bars, the gray, light blue and gold bars represent BSA equivalent funds. So if we put $8 million in fund balance towards something, it wouldn't show as 8 million. It would show as the BSA equivalent. So we keep this chart where all the numbers mean the same thing all the way across for when we're talking to external stakeholders. The state of Alaska did provide one-time funds in both FY19 and FY20 in lieu of a permanent increase to the BSA. The Anchorage School District has applied fund balance since Dr. Bishop got here for every year except for this current school year. We've also used federal relief money for certainly this year, a little bit last year, and a significant amount next year, as you can see. The dark blue bars do represent the BSA. The last time it's changed was the legislative session in 2016. And from then, they set it at 5930 from 2017. So it represents no change on years 23 and 24 in the state's formula, although there are several bills currently in the 32nd legislative session that may increase the BSA or one-time funding if passed. Fiscal years 22, which is this year, and 23 relied heavily on federal S R 2 and S R 3 grants. However, there are not enough federal funds remaining in FY24 to close the structural deficit unless other revenue becomes available or the district reduces a significant number of requirements. On the far right, you'll see that if there isn't an infusion of new revenue, that we will have exhausted the S R funds and the shortfall is a BSA equivalent of approximately $620. During the past five years, and it's important as we talk to the public and we talk to the legislators, ASD has done a lot in the last five years because you do see gaps underneath that red line. So what what has ASD done? We've closed two schools, not only on that in Mount Spur. We combined numerous programs like Crossroads, Avail, PIDEA. We merged two schools into one facility, King Tech High School and Alaska Middle College School that was formerly in Eagle River. And we reduce staff accordingly in order to achieve a balanced budget each year. On top of that, we looked at how do we increase revenue opportunities? Dr. Bishop stood up the Alaska Middle College School. And and really, it didn't just save us money, but it provided even more resources for our own students. So when Alaska Middle College or Alaska Middle College School costs us a little bit about around $10,000 per student, all in. If you look at all of our other high schools, depending on whether they're Title I, all funds in, it's 13 to $18,000 per student per year. So Alaska Middle College School is is not just cheaper, but also provides and attracts students who are formerly outside the district to get into a special unique program that that really might fit them. The second thing that that Dr. Bishop did was start the partnership with the Lower Yukon School District and their Kusovac Academy. So Lower Yukon pays for the staff to be able to hold a third tier of CTE training for their students. But there are many, many empty slots which allow our students yet one more opportunity to take CTE classes that otherwise wouldn't have been available for them in their schedule. And questions will be at the end. I'm sure there'll be more, but you can always find me offline.
And I'd like to just, as Jim and I watch, and this is very, for those of you going to Juneau, when we watch Senate Finance get their report from OMB at the state, State of Alaska, they are reporting on all revenues. And so our legislatures will see graphs that show continued revenue going to school districts. And it looks like it's increasing. And we really, Jim did, I think, an excellent job of demonstrating that when you then, although the first year it spends the same, we then continue to go have to go back to the well, go back to the marmot each day we wake up and have to each year of budget season to go back. And that's the biggest picture with this, to have in your in your head that it isn't necessarily, it is the BSA is not what Jim called inflation proof. And that's the a major issue for Alaska right now. Thanks, Jim, and back to you.
Okay, if there's, if there's one takeaway as you're having discussions on that last chart, it's that if you want to implement what we've been doing in the last few years, multi-year programs, it's that being able to budget on a 12-month cycle with no future forecast of additional funding, that that definitely has been with us. And and I don't like marmots anymore, so I'll turn to Andy. Next slide, please.
Thank you. So this slide, you'll recognize, it's always, you know, we've kept us pretty standard. Our general fund revenue slide. The big takeaways here are, you know, we're going to be a bit down about $16 million in revenue. When we reported the pro forma, I think we had it at about $20.4 million in revenue lower than what our current budget is. We did get our demographic projections back. You know, originally, we had about 2,400 students or ADM lost between our FY22 adopted budget and the kids that actually showed up in FY22. So our demographic projections has come back with about 250 students in the district or ASD facility-based programs returning. And charter schools have projected another about 350 students returning to those programs. So about 680 or so more than what we had originally put in the pro forma before we had gotten our our estimates. So that's really the driver of why that deficit in our revenue goes from 20, negative 20.4 million to about 16 million. You'll notice about most of that is within the foundation funding. You know, certainly to do to a loss of enrollment, but also a step down the hold harmless provision from a 50% hold harmless rate to 25%. And then about a two and a half million reduction, a corresponding reduction in the additional allowable contribution from the municipality. So that's our revenue picture, you know, not a whole lot of updates other than just abetting our projections for our enrollment. This slide shows our anticipated spending on the S R funds. As you recall, we did do a board memo that allocated an initial tranche of the 112 million that we received to things like allocating the entire amount of indirect cost of charter schools, then of some, some other facilities based things that we really wanted to get working on for this year. So this is the allocation of the next 91 million that we said we would come back to the board and ask approval for. And this will be included in our budget book. And we want our approval, you know, to be in conjunction with our And this will be included in our budget book, and we want our approval, you know, to be in conjunction with our actual budget documents as, as we normally would. So really, and this focuses on our board, our board goals with graduation, CCL, and IT. The big chunks of this are the IT instructional support. That's our one-to-one program that also includes all the Chromebooks we have to purchase for that, all the instructional software that we're purchasing with respect to virtual learning, and the FTE to support those, and the addenda that we pay elementary school teachers to run, to handle the tech requirements at those facilities. The other big tranches you'll see are the reduction in class size, the maintenance of PTR. That's about 477 FTE, a little over $56 million. That's a really, a large chunk of this money is going to retain PTR. And if you look across FY24, you'll see that, and the virtual is gone, because we've really just spent out as much, you know, this accounts for the $91 million we have remaining. We are going to do a series of air quality improvements to help the airflow within our schools, as well as safety improvements with our intercom systems that are using old analog systems at 16 schools. And then we had, our transportation fund, oh, is, sorry. So Transportation Fund, the bigger changes here are, is we've taken out the general fund contribution, and instead, we're planning to supplement that with local tax contributions, as will be below the municipal tax request. The transportation funding is expected to go down by the state, and we're not anticipating usage of fund balance in there, although we do have some fund, fund balance remaining in there, but we have not settled the transportation contract for this year or next. But we should have sufficient funds to be able to make that up. However, you know, we don't want to obligate those prior to having those contracts settled. But this, the Transportation Fund, this will provide the same level of service that we are, that we're doing now. Hopefully, we'll get more drivers and have those routes filled, and we won't have the work, or the shortages in routes that we've experienced at, at some points this year. But again, you know, it's going to be pretty well, we're planning to have the same level of service that we really hoped for this year. For student nutrition, again, you know, same thing, we plan to have about the same level of service as we do this year. Not a whole lot in terms of their total budget changes, but you know, this, this is a group that does a whole lot of work and feeds a lot of kids, about 23,000 meals per day. So we just hope to be able to keep that program going.
Okay, I'll take this slide. So this slide should look familiar. I've had it in a couple of different methods prior. This slide depicts the general fund expenditures by state function. And as you look along the bars going from top down, there's also red letters that signify the amount of SIR funds that we're planning to direct toward three of the 12 state functions. Instruction, Support Services Instruction, and Operations of Maintenance and Plant. 72% of the district's revenue is directed toward Instruction, Special Education, and Operations of Maintenance and Plant. The brown bars represent those functions that directly allow a school's building doors to open and close each night. They represent 93% of the district's general fund and 94% overall, if you include SIR funds. District Admin is just over 1% of the district's budget. If you look down and see the District Admin Support, for those who aren't familiar, it does contain an awful lot of functions required to administratively operate the district. IT is 57% of all District Admin Support costs, but well more than half of all of their costs are software and hardware and contracts that support the district. On the bottom, you can see the breakout of where our funds are used to support the district's mission, and we're still well over 80-plus percent. Almost 86 of the district's total revenue goes towards salaries and benefits.
That's actually one of my favorite slides, so thank you, Jim. I'm going to begin the snapshot so that we understand describing the revenue and the different functions. What does it look like in schools? And so these next slides give you a picture of the staffing levels and changes in our schools. Just for a reminder that the PTR is a budget staffing formula, so it's not a class size or a class cap. It's how many teachers are assigned per students, and then a principal of a school would have that flexibility to meet student needs. As stated on the SIR slide, over $56 million was put towards 477 FTE for next year. You did notice that we didn't define the following year of FY24, and it was a smaller amount. Again, as a reminder, SIR monies need to be spent by September of 2024. There were enrollment changes strictly based on student enrollment. Consequently, at the high school levels, we added three. They are growing. We had to reduce 18 teachers in the middle schools and nearly 47 teachers at elementary schools. And so we'll go through each one of these different levels individually. Turn it back over to you.
Okay, Dan Barker, Senior Director of Elementary, notably not a doctor. So just want to make that clear. There's a lot of those floating around. So for elementary, the, the good news here really is, you've heard from Dr. Johnson, or excuse me, Dr. Knutson, about our curricular measures, both in English Language Arts and Mathematics. So that's a lot of the focus of what we're doing with our teachers and where we're going forward with the curriculum for students. You'll, the, the, a big takeaway here for elementary is that since 2017, again, if you think back to that BSA piece, the, the state has not increased the base student allocation since 2017, yet we have kept that away from the classroom. So we have maintained the same classroom PTR ratio in elementary that we have had since 2017. The rest of the metric up here are some of our support folks, and that also has remained static since 2017. So in elementary, the spring, we will see some of the usual movement that we do based on that enrollment-driven reduction that Dr. Bishop just talked about. That will be folks moving from one location to a next based on reducing or increasing student populations. But again, no reduction to the base, or to the allocation of, of teachers to students in elementary level this year.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barker. So Kirsten Johnson from secondary again. So I have a few different slides here to talk about. First, we'll look at middle school. As Dr. Bishop mentioned, we are looking at a reduction of 18 teaching staff based on enrollment at the middle school level. There has been a significant drop in enrollment based on our projections for next year at our middle school levels. That said, when we look at our support positions, which this slide articulates by school, we felt there's been a, a very big uptick in our response needed by our support staff at schools due to mental health and COVID mitigation, and just our public relations with our, our, our parents and, and the public that comes to our schools. So we felt it was very necessary to keep our support staff robust. And as is, so you don't see a lot of changes there, although you do see one reduction at Goldenview in security. And that's based on need of the school and responding to that need. So, so you'll, you'll not see a lot of changes other than the reduction of FTE based on enrollment at the middle school level. If you go to the next slide, this looks at our Big Eight high schools. As Dr. Bishop mentioned, again, there is an increase in FTE. Our high schools have remained relatively stable for their enrollment and, and in fact, increased slightly based on projections for next year. So there will be some slight teacher increase FTE at that level. And again, much like middle school, due to the, the needs in terms of our support positions, we felt it necessary to keep on the, the positions that are articulated on this slide fairly stable based on a, a steady enrollment at high school and the needs at our schools. So there's, there are no changes at high school on this slide. If you look at to our alternative schools, these are our schools that have very specific populations. You will notice some changes here. And, and often, we have some of our more vulnerable populations at these schools that need additional support. So there is a reduction of a counselor at, at AMCS. That was kind of a, a budget correction, if you will. Within our budget, we, we did take a teaching staff and replace it with a counselor. So, so that's just a budget correction in, in the budget this year. And then when you look at Benson Secondary School, as the board that has heard previously, programs such as Avail, Covenant House, and Crossroads have been consolidated into Benson Secondary School. And due to that increase in student programming, there was a need for a full-time nurse. That's something that we've supplemented outside of the budget and we're, we're now putting into our, our budget for Benson Secondary School. So you'll notice that change in the budget as well. So those are the three slides from secondary schools and just an explanation of that PTR.
So this next slide talks a little bit about the general fund school-based changes. So the, the first one talks a little bit about those metric reductions that you've been hearing about. So the total amount there, you can see on the side. The next one talks about metric-based teachers being moved to SIR3, previously funded by SIRSA and SIR2. So that's another one of those changes that is occurring within the budget. We just mentioned the Benson Nurse. There's another one shifting to 20.13 TA FTE from SIR over to the general fund. Dr. Johnson mentioned the reduction of one security at Goldenview. The other one is just a vacant elementary library assistant that was adjusted. She, Dr. Johnson also mentioned the counselor one, and the, the one that says charter school changes, those are changes that were recommended by the principals of the charter schools themselves. Those were not things that the ASD staff directed, but those came directly from them. The next slide talks a little bit about some of the special education service changes that we've had. And so based on their, their budget requests, we've had to add two deaf educational interpreters and an intervention coach for the deaf program. And we have reduced 1.5 FTE at Whaley, and we added a behavior strategist. Now, by reducing that, that, those were unfilled positions. So it wasn't like we had to reduce the staff person. We didn't have anyone for that. So there was a conversion over to a behavior strategist. We had two school psych openings that were vacant, that we'd never been able to fill. So we have added some behavioral analysts and middle school and high school behavior strategists. And this is part of our attempt under that guardrail about working with our behavioral health and mental health, and how we can support our teachers in, in some of these issues. And as many of you already know, we have some changes coming in our seclusion and restraint, and all of those things that feed into the behavior pieces. And so this is a, a high need in all of the schools. You'll see two in elementary school intervention coaches for special ed, and then the, of course, this, the summer school addenda. So those are the main ones there on that one. The next slide talks a little bit about our district, total district-wide changes overall. So the first one, there's been a little bit of reorganization and some, some personnel changes in our HR department. And you'll see that some of those were funded through elimination of one of our other programs that we ran. It was called GLINT. And we've used, repurposed those funds, which we're not using now, and, and done that. The, the task here is fitting our guardrail about recruitment. And they are forming collaborative relationships with special education and working hard on trying to recruit in those hard-to-fill positions, which we know is a need. The one that talks about the .5 FTE in equity and compliance, that was a combination position that was partially funded between communications and split with equity and compliance. And with our social media needs increasing and equity issues in their office increasing, we've made both of those essentially 1.0 and not .5. Skipping on down, the, the CTE technology specialists, those were being covered through reduced addenda. But those are needs as the CTE department and the career college life continues to expand. There is a lot of very proprietary-level software that they have to have, and so they need another position to help with that. Skipping on down to the one that talks about increased custodial FTE, you'll see a big number off to the side. I want to explain that one. There was just one increase as far as FTE with the custodial, but the, all of that other money that goes up to the 1.1 million was in supplies, services, playgrounds, boilers, and a, and a large collection. And so when you do your individual meetings with us, and we can get into the schedule, we can get into the details of all those if there's further interest. But this just explains the big ones. And of course, the biggest one on the sheet is the School Resource Officer Budget Line of 2.3 million. And so that's where we pick that up through the district-wide changes. And so those summarize district-wide changes.
So, Madam President and Board, we have provided you a preliminary budget that addresses the general fund deficit and also explained the reason why there is a general fund deficit. We prioritized classrooms and maintained our educational programs. We utilized the SIR funds to maximize the recovery from COVID-19 to address the learning gap. We also redesigned educational supports to address the learning gap, and finally, redirected funds and resources to support what the board said is the main thing, your goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Thank you, staff. I'd like to welcome members Higgins and Holloman, who have joined us online. So at this point, we can accept questions. If you're online, just raise your hand, and I'll, I can see you. So who has questions for the staff? And I do want to remind board members, if you have not signed up, I see you, Dora. If you have not signed up for your conference, for your individual session or small group session to one or two people, please do so tonight. Member Wilson, I saw your hand.
Just a quick question. I was hoping that I could get a little better picture of what the behavior strategists do, what their role is in a school, if I can get just a little more explanation about that.
Thank you, Member Wilson. So behavior strategists and behavior analysts are a little different. And Tarlisha Wayne would probably be better able to explain that. She's not able to be here tonight. But what I can tell you is that their express role is to try to work with the staff around helping them with forming the, the, the functional behavior analyst. There's, I'm looking for the term now, the FBAs and the, the, the bit plans that go into their IEPs. But when students have behavioral items on there, there's a lot of work they have to do with school psychs. And part of those behavior strategists and analysts are there also to help the school psychs with data collection, so we can help get the students in a place where they'll be successful. So it's working both with adults and with the children.
Did you have a follow-up, member?
I do, if, if that's okay. Is it particular schools that we have these staff available to, or at, at elementary, middle, and high? Or how are those schools selected for, for these particular staff?
Ms. Wayne hasn't told me exactly which schools they're targeting. They're still looking at the needs. But the way I understood it is in our budget, we've placed positions for two elementary interventionists, two middle school, two high school. And how though they would be deployed would be based on the IP needs of the year. So those, at this point, haven't been determined what schools they would serve.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Who else has, I see Member Jacobs and then Lessons.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to first thank the staff for the presentation. A lot of work went into it, so thanks. Question on page 14 on the first guardrail, the two strategies regarding leaving student groups underrepresented in lottery and application-based programs. The two strategies are facilitate changes to third-party software and strengthen awareness of choice in underrepresented communities. Are there dollar amounts attached to those two strategies? And can you expand on what strengthen awareness of choice means?
So.
And, and Dr. Stock, just as a reminder, Sonya Hunt is online as well. And so depending if you need to, who's doing the work, yeah.
Thank you. On the, the lottery question, so, so far, the only budget So so far, the only budget item on there has been some small amounts that are buried in the IT budget because we had to work with the vendor to redesign, reprogram the, some of the lottery software. So that wasn't the initial step. But the part about awareness of choice and underrepresented, a good example of our beginning kickoff is February 19th.
Yeah. Would you like Sonia to answer that one?
Sure.
Sonia, did you have something to add in regard to strengthen awareness of choice in underrepresented communities?
Thank you so much. We've been working on this collaboratively and looking at resources like transportation, general awareness of the programs offered, and really seeing how we can really contribute to an uptick of students, various students from a variety of backgrounds, really being able to take or have access and opportunity in this area. And that's the only thing that I would add. Thank you.
So in addition to that, February 19th, we will have a fair here of all the optional alternative and lottery programs here at the Ed Center. And so there will be all of those schools with booths, and we'll be trying to raise more community awareness over that as an initial step. But the rest of those guardrails, they will come forward as the work unfolds.
And I'd like to be clear that the work isn't to eliminate people from attending these by having more. It's really to engage and make the pool of people in the lottery larger and representative of the school district so that the chance of getting selected through the lottery is greater. Did you have a follow-up, Member Jacobs?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. Member Lessons.
Thank you. I feel like I have a series of questions, so I'll just sort of work through them slowly and take my turn.
And Madam President, I was just texted. The software alone, just to change it, was $3,300. You had asked for just a small. I know that's just a drop in the bucket, but I was just texted that, so I wanted to share.
Thank you. So let's take your first.
All right.
This is question and follow-up.
I brought our current budget with me just because it's a handy point of reference. I'm a little bit more familiar with it. And in comparing Slide 20 with the equivalent, which is the expenditures by state function in the general fund, that sort of helps me understand some of the biggest shifts. And the one that maybe caught my eye, well, there were a few that caught my eye, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm reading this correctly. And we can talk about it more in detail with my meeting. But I noticed a $21 million increase to the District Administration Support Services, a decrease of about $4 million for special education instruction, and about an increase of about $5 million for operations and maintenance of plants. And then, of course, a big increase in instruction as well. So I just, am I reading some of those shifts kind of.
Are you on the bottom?
Correctly. Yeah, I'm looking. I'm sorry, I'm looking at this, and I'm comparing it to.
I understand the question.
They understand the question well. It was purposeful what we did, so I'll turn it over.
Right. So in the past, we have attrition estimates for how much staff and unspent money we're going to have. Typically, in the last few years, it's been in the 18 to 20 million dollar range. But we've always put that in a single line item account. And it's always been on that District Admin Support Services. So what you would see in previous budgets is about a $20 million kind of paper reduction in that District Admin Support Services. So if you look at the, in that budget, you'll see the actual cost in the $20 million range also, more closely aligned to what we actually show in the budget. So with this budget, we have about 20, a little over $24 million in district attrition. But we spread that to all the different state functions. So you get a better idea, and the board and the public has a better idea of what we're actually spending in those functions and not having that big mass of a negative attrition reduction in any one line item. Special education, that's one where we have a lot of hard-to-fill positions, and they have about 35% of all the attrition across the district. So that's why you see the reduction. And overall, it's about eight and a half million dollars that we've applied to, or eight and a half, nine million dollars that we've applied in attrition to just special education instruction.
Yeah, and I just want to share the history behind this. Prior to really the team of Jim and Andy, we did not report the budget in state functions because we had different functions in ASD. We transitioned that through their business process review in 2016-17 to strictly state functions so that we can compare apples to apples, oranges to oranges from districts around the state. In that, we had had that account that they have. We did make a deliberate decision this year to really make it more transparent and have those attrition accounts in those differences. So we continue to increase efficacy and really ability for people to look up and find the state functions and where the money's spent. So we had to talk about that, should we do it this year or not, just to see. But we think it's higher transparency.
And just to point out, some of you might remember before, before Dr. Bishop, certainly when Carol Coman was here, at the end of the year, all of a sudden, they would have like $20 million that just came up. And it was because they didn't have attrition accounts. So first, we established an attrition account, spent several years trying to tinker with it to try to get it close to actuals, so you could have some historical data. So you could break it out by bargaining groups and by state functions. And so the next logical step, once you feel comfortable that now you, in a non-COVID year, but once you feel like you now have, you know, several years of data where you can comfortably break it out with some accuracy, it really made sense to go ahead and do that.
And part of that's been in recent years, in some of the contracts we bargained out, we used to pay on medical waivers. When an employee would waive medical insurance, we'd still pay into health trust or whatever account it was in, depending on the bargaining unit. Since those have been bargained out of there, you know, that's about 700 people or so waived insurance. And $20,000 a piece, that's 14 million. So the bulk of this attrition money is within that medical insurance realm. So this is kind of context. It's kind of a newer thing that we have, this amount of attrition. I think we've always had some, but you know, the actual amount tied to that is quite a bit higher than it used to be.
One second question. Another big issue that continues to be on my mind is the PTR. And my sense is that we have had a study, and we have this evidence-based model of class sizes at about 15 for our youngest students and class sizes of 25 for grades four and above. What would that cost to implement here? I guess, why don't we see that as a, why don't we see that as a focus? And what?
We haven't done a complete analysis in the last couple of years. The last time, it was over $150 million more per year to implement it.
And to share why it isn't in the budget, we actually, will you share just that you have to have a balanced budget? We have placed in, in prior years, just grants that cover the amount simply because of the function of budgeting. Could you guys share why?
Yes. So by state statute, we have to have a balanced budget. We can't have, we can't budget for $150 million more than what we have. We can't. About, about four years ago, and I know Mr. Donnelly remembers it, we had a similar discussion at a budget brief, and it was the night they were going to approve it. And all of a sudden, we added, I don't know, $80 million worth of state grants that we never received. But we added wedges for all these different things. And I think the thought was, if we can show Juno that we need an extra $100 million, that maybe we'll get more. It really wasn't very, it wasn't an effective way to share the message. And I think, I know Dr. Bishop and I have spent hours and hours and hours leading to that last slide so we can give the legislators credit while still being able to articulate that education costs more because everything costs more. And we really had to be able to figure out how to show the fiscal cliff because it's really difficult when you're like Andy and I and Dina. We could visualize what the fiscal cliff was. We knew about what it was, and we knew when it was going to happen. It was really being able to paint that picture so we can talk to legislators and say, look, this isn't made up. You're right. There were years that you gave us one-time funding, and we used fund balance, and we used all these things, and then we closed schools and merged programs and added AMCS and Lower Yukon's partnership. Those were all those things we did to try to bring that red bar down on all of those years where it shows above. And I don't know, this is the second year of the 32nd legislature. So that means that anything that doesn't get passed by the end of this section, session is dead. And they start all over from scratch again next January. So when you're in that kind of timing position, and it's an election year, it seemed like it made more sense to really set ourselves up for success in being able to inform the legislatures, show them visually, have those discussions about what it really means, and try to find some success in the next few months. Because, you know, realistically, they're probably not going to have multiple extended sessions because they can't campaign while they're in session, right? So we have a short amount of time, and this seemed like the better approach than putting in a bunch of wedges for grants that aren't included in any bills.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions. Page 14, under guardrails. Just would like a little bit more information about the increased collaborative recruitment efforts in special ed and HR. I'm assuming HR is like all other positions. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I think Matt and he can call on others, but I think Sonia Hunt might have some information. Might have some information on just the work around this.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bishop. To the President, the collaboration exists, as referenced in the slide, between talent management and special education. And that's been the case for some years. In fact, the current recruitment structure in the district that we have a single recruiter who focuses much of her energy on the special education, hard-to-fill positions and those needs. We have a budget adjustment suggested to free up some time in that recruiter position so that those duties can be spread across other areas as well. And then special education would engage in some of its own recruitment efforts, but that collaboration will continue. We also have, as Dr. Bishop referenced, and Ms. Hunt may want to speak to this as well, but the Talent Management Department within the HR Division works with the Office of Equity and Compliance through the various initiatives identified by that office to, whether it's to adjust in our recruitment strategies, the work that talent's doing to align with the mandate in a program or initiative led by that office, that being the Office of Equity and Compliance, so that efforts are aligned, or to work toward development of some collaborative initiative. And that effort, as I said, in HR is led by Peggy Rankin, our Senior Director of Talent Management, in conjunction with Ms. Hunt's work as well. So I don't know, Sonia, if you'd like to add anything.
I think to the President, to members of the Board, Superintendent, I think that Matt did an amazing job presenting the information. If we were to drill down a little bit, what it looks like is a lot of pathways work to make sure that there are people in the pipeline to result in having a more diverse and culturally responsive workforce. So that looks like growing our own initiative or Lit Now. It looks like the aforementioned collaboration between special education and human resources that includes that pathways again, where many of our TAs are diverse and just getting them what they need to be able to become full-time teachers and the like.
Okay, so could you mention leadership as well?
Sure. Including in that, included in that portfolio are a number of things, which includes our leadership program for BIPOC educators as a means to, studies show that oftentimes when people are applying to jobs, that particularly people of a certain generation, a younger generation, barring any age discrimination or anything like that, they look for a pathways, right? They look for companies and organizations where they can see a pathway. And the leadership program for BIPOC educators provides that recruitment tool as well as retention strategy and a pathway into leadership for our current teachers. And it's open to all AEA members.
Thank you. Thank you. And so just, so did I hear you say, Matt, that there was a, we have a recruiter right now that's going to be doing the collaboration. I get the special ed, HR piece. Those are our most difficult and hard-to-fill. I'm just trying to get a sense of the other jobs in the district. And Sonia did address, you know, the leadership pathway, growing our own. And so, okay, is there a dedicated position for recruitment? Or is that in Sonia's office?
The current year budget, Madam President, is that the recruiter within the HR department is funded both on the HR budget side, but also through special education. What we found is that, and I don't have the exact percentages, but a fairly sizable percentage of her day-to-day is spent in working with special education, which is a good thing to fill those hard-to-fill positions. But we recognize, to your point, the need to have a full-time dedicated recruiter across district functions to assist with not only those special education positions, but other positions as well. And so before you, in the presentation of the budget going forward, would be to dedicate that current position in HR as an HR-funded position. And then there would be a recruitment function on the special education side to sort of, not necessarily separate those functions, but to have that collaboration continue while having more time available in the HR recruiter position for across-district work.
Thank you. And my final question for this one has to do with the incentive bonuses. Is that separate from what we expect to have in a new contract, AEA contract? Or does that include what we expect to have in a new AEA contract?
The.
If I made any sense.
Not so much. I don't, I don't think, Madam President, at least in the presentation, before you contemplating anything that would change with adoption of the contract. In the current contract, there are, there is an incentive available in those hard-to-fill areas. That's been in the contract for some years. In addition to that, there has been a practice of hiring bonuses for special education physicians in particular. Those efforts began some years ago and continue. And as Ms. Hunt referenced, there's, we have a number of other initiatives on tap going forward, particularly when I want to mention, take the opportunity to mention the paraprofessional who has interest in moving into a special education position in partnership with post-secondary institution in Alaska, looking at beginning summer 2022, a program where that individual would have opportunity to move into those degree programs for the benefit of the district after they graduate with a requirement that they move into a position as a special education educator with the district and super excited about providing more details of that as we get it set up.
And Madam President, many of our other difficult-to-fill positions are not in teaching and learning. We have loss nutrition and custodial bonuses as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, Member Higgins, thank you.
And I guess I'll chat offline. I think that when I look at trying to have a diverse culturally responsive workforce, I think of almost an affirmative action program in which you're analyzing how effective, what the workforce would look like if we looked at the available workforce. If 10% of the workforce was in one category, you would try to achieve that as a goal. And then you look at how well you're being effective just recruitment. Then you look at the next step, how well they're being screened in and the like. Is that taking place, that you're analyzing the effectiveness of the recruitment and the selection process? of of the recruitment and the selection process, all of it? Or you're just focusing on focusing just upon more recruitment period? I'm not quite sure I caught what I was looking for in the way of answers to that.
Thank you through the president to Member Higgins. We do look, of course, at the life cycle of the employee, beginning with the applicant application phase. There are, there is, I would say, currently a top-heavy focus on recruitment efforts. Those are in place, have been for some time, not just through our recruiter, but we have an onboarding induction generalist to assist in those tasks. We we do, though, when we identify an applicant and sign them for employment, so to speak, also have retention efforts because we view those to be equally important. There's obviously an ongoing interest in maintaining the talent that we're able to attract. And and so we, I would say that we've not traditionally in the district, at least in the years I've been here, had a focus on those retention efforts. And that would explain some of the some of the dedicated human resources that we've identified already and propose going forward with some of the academy work, both on the certificated and classified side, particularly with supervisors to encourage not only promotional opportunities, but also just engagement generally as a metric for for increasing and bettering our retention efforts. We do use data analytics to to track the success of those efforts. But those depend on which which component of the recruitment retention, I guess, cycle we're focused on. Some of that is is through programs that, in reference to Glenn earlier, which was an employee engagement program that we used with with some success, albeit limited time in terms of how long we engage with that vendor. But we were committed to moving forward, using data to analyze how successful our efforts in both recruitment and retention.
Thank you, Matt and Mr. Teford. Sonia, can you add additional, your camera just came on. Did you have additional to add from the work we're doing with other surveys and reports?
Thank you so much, Dr. Bishop, to the president, to members of the board. This, I guess, the question or my thoughts on it, response to the question is a bit layered. So we do know that 16% of our AEA members are would be considered culturally diverse or racially diverse. We see a lot of hope in our APA bargaining unit and that 25% of the members of that union would be considered racially diverse or culturally diverse. And so when we have taken a deep dive, it's just as a collaborative effort between HR and the Office of Equity and Compliance, we, under Dr. Bishop's recommendation, we looked at the data from just the application to the actual hiring. And we looked at the availability of the workforce and the credentials of the workforce citywide. And what we see is a real deficit of those that would be eligible to teach or are tracked to go into teaching. And so many of our applicants don't even identify what they what their identity is. And we realize that it is a sensitive topic. But that information has looked has been looked at collaboratively between our office and HR to be able, talent management, to be able to address it from a data perspective. We continue to work on those efforts and sharing a job announcements far and wide. And it has been also a focus of particularly the work in just assessing the work to be done by the Office of Equity and Compliance. So I hope that that answers a little bit of the question.
It does, thank you. Member, oh, Donley.
No, thank you, Madam President. Do the numbers in this presentation include the increase increases if the tentative agreement with the teachers' union is adopted? And on page 14, it shows the the projected funding gap between FY23 and FY24 as BSA equivalent of $670. And how much is that in millions of dollars?
Member Dolly, what page, I'm sorry. It's the bar graph, but we will, 15.
Oh, no, 16, I'm sorry.
Okay.
15.
I didn't bring the spreadsheet with me and it can get close, but I will definitely have that ready for the one-on-ones.
Do you have a ballpark? Last I heard, it was in the 70s, 70 millions.
Well, the 670 BSA equivalent is roughly about 48 million. Then we have, you know, some of that leftover money to, you know, if we're expecting a 70 to $80 million budget gap in '24, we still have some of that ESER3 money remaining to cover it. And that's that other, what is it, 320? 220, sorry, the number's small. So yeah, about the 670 represents about 48 million.
So the number between the BSA and the inflation-proof BSA is about the same. But we still have ESER3 remaining in '24 under the current plan. So that's what shortens it. But naturally, in FY25, when there's no more
That was confusing.
Right.
25 with 24, because I think that the number in there was right around 70.
24 drops off pretty big. And if it were to stay the same in '24, or we would get one-time money in '24, but nothing in '25, then you would you would really see, obviously, a more significant gap.
But again, that that I think the proportion of the money was was very planned out because it has to be spent in that first quarter. It has to be spent right now by
30 September 2024.
30 September 2024.
That was actually one of my next questions was the the block of COVID impact funds that are shown on this graph for FY24. Well, actually, let me ask it another way. The block of COVID funds that are shown on this graph for FY23, are any of those eligible to hold over till the '24 to reduce that gap there showing of about $48 million?
Of course, if you if you look at the way that we've laid it out, if you look at whether it's the air handling system or anything else, there's always the possibility like this year that we devote money towards positions that can never be filled and then that money rolls over. On Tom's lane, where he's got intercom systems and air hand or air purification systems, we haven't done the contracts yet, so we don't know the exact timing of how that'll be. But you can roll money over as long as you spend it by September 2024. So the way that we look at as we get through '23 is you always spend the most restrictive money first before you use general funds, therefore freeing it up more for more flexibility for the school board and administration to devote towards other priorities.
How many paychecks would we have by September 30th, 2024 dispersed?
Just one.
Just one. So do you see our, we would pay, that that's a big chunk of change for that first paycheck of the 85%? You know, it goes to people. So that was in the planning, to be sure. Making him just even would be difficult because we wouldn't have the ability to expend them.
Because of the imposed federal dates on the money. Yeah, that and and what I'm looking for here is a way to soften the blow, to close the gap by potentially spreading out the ESER, the impact funds longer. But it's looking like that's going to be very challenging to do. This, to close this gap right now, the only proposal I've seen on the table is to get a BSA increase of about $670 per student. And I was just wondering, we know that there hasn't been a BSA increase since 2016. But what was the largest one that was ever, do we know what the largest one in the last 20 years?
We have a spreadsheet that goes all the way back, but they've also changed the formula a couple of times. So I don't know if it's like Fuji apples and some other kind of apple when you do that comparison.
It was during the time that Sarah Palin was governor, so that's how far back it went. I do remember it and the the majority of the growth was in the intensive where they initially, over three years, went from counting the person, you know, the multiplier went up and up and up. But a big study went on.
14 times.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just wondering, what's the historical perspective of a $670, $70 increase in the BSA? I don't think that's ever happened in the history of the state. And I was just trying to look back and what were the last time there was a big one, how much it was. And I'm guessing it was about in the $100 million range. It's just my guess. But if you've got a chart, I think I think it's important to look and because it really sets the, you know, a sense of the reality of how large that kind of request is compared to anything that's ever happened before.
We can do this. I think this is also the first time that we've gone five straight years without the BSA improving. So but I'll work on that.
And once again, I'm just looking for realistic ways to close this gap here because it's bad enough in FY24 where it's still mitigated by some COVID impact dollars. But when you get to FY25, it's just astronomical. It's just huge.
So let's, let's start over. Member Wilson, do you have any more questions? Oops. We'll come back.
I'm thinking.
Thank you. All right, Member Jacob.
Thank you, Madam President. So a question on the on the guardrails, again on page, I think it's 14. The last one regarding mental health services, the reorganization that will hopefully allow for higher access for services and at least elementary schools. Can more information be relayed as to what that looks like practically speaking? Will there be someone assigned to each school? What will the access look like after this reorganization?
So what we're doing right now is looking at how we can take our existing internal services, excuse me, such as school psychologists, counselors, the behavior strategist you heard about, and really coordinating them together so that we can look at what those services look like across all of schools so that we can have equitable access. You're going to be getting this month a report on this guardrail that's going to give you the initial numbers of what our current status is. And that's going to provide the foundation about starting to look at how do we make that more equitable across schools. The other thing in supplementing this is really working with our community partners like Volunteers of America, Providence Behavioral Health as another avenue to provide services in our schools. And really looking across all of those resources we have of mental health and just really systematically figuring out whether we have equitable access at every school as opposed to placing counselors separately, school psych separately. We do the community mental health separately. It's pulling them all together to see how do we make a systemic plan so that all schools have access to those services. So right now, every school has some access, whether it be a counselor, a school psychologist, behavior strategist. But we want to ensure that all schools have a very good access to all of those services in a systematic way. So you'll see the foundation of where we're starting from and we'll work on that next year.
Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, something tangentially related, if you'll allow, Madam President, with at least behavioral health supports. The SRO program funding of 2.3 million that's being proposed, what funding tranche of ours have we identified is that coming from?
That's just right out of the general fund money.
Okay, member, we still have about 15 minutes to ask more questions before we have to do one more thing. Let's see, next on my list is member lessons.
Thank you. I'm reflecting on our progress monitoring, our goal monitoring from last week, two weeks ago, the last iteration, reading proficiency. And I'm thinking a lot about this year's first graders and second graders as being some of the most impacted from online schooling and COVID disruptions. And I'm wondering if $150 million for changing PTRs across the K-12 system is out of reach? If there's a way to sort of surgically target those particular cohorts with smaller class sizes? And if so, what a 15-student PTR would look like for grades one and two, one and two next year? Excuse me, two and three next year? That's what I had written down. Thinking that maybe some of those are some of our most vulnerable students and that they fall squarely in line with our with the board's goals. It's sort of a supposal.
In regard to requesting an additional grant from the state or reorganizing the funds that we have? Or, I mean, all could be possible, but if it's within this budget, you'd be looking at something else to remove that to place there. But I could have Diane, or if you just want to speak to first and second graders, in the need. I mean, the, it's pretty tremendous, but some of the things that we are doing for them.
So that data is showing that those students do need some intensive intervention. And not necessarily creasing teachers is going to fix that. We just need to make sure that we're providing those evidence-based researched interventions to students. The more research shows, the more time we spend with students in that environment with intense instruction, the more that we can catch those students up.
And I believe, can you speak a little bit to summer school in regard to carrying these students forward? I know we don't catch all students, but what would that look like coming up?
Right, so we still have a good whole half of this year to continue to help catch these students up. But then we'll also provide a very targeted summer school program like last summer where we saw significant gains with students. We'll do that same very intense targeted instruction for students this coming summer that will be utilizing those interventions to help those students catch up.
All right, let's go back. Can I have one quick follow-up? Second, second question, distinct from the first. I'm hoping that maybe one of, maybe Mr. Roth, you could speak a little bit more about the ventilation plans. Could you articulate what that looks like within, you know, some of the specifics that you proposed here?
Through through the president to member lessons. Absolutely, thank you for the opportunity. So in short, there are two efforts. The first, the first we've discussed previously, and that is the intercom to replace the TC6 systems, which are which are dated unsupported TCU. The the second more involved, though, which I think gets to your question. The district has 24 schools and two buildings. Our student transportation in our in our maintenance and CPC building, they operate on what are what are their HVAC systems are operated under a pneumatic control system, which is a somewhat aged technology. It's largely dependent on the thermostats, air compressors, compressed air to function valves, dampers to move air. What we are proposing to do is to replace this aged technology with electronic control systems, which we will have on ourDDC or direct digital control. And and what this does is a couple of things. It nests very well with this transition to DZIGO. So with with the electronic controls, we'll be able to optimize the airflow, air movement in our classrooms. The problem with the pneumatic systems is we can't really monitor them. We can't track them, we can't, we can't adjust them without having to go down to a school to make adjustments. When you're on a DDC system, you can do it from a computer terminal. So this will allow us to optimize airflow and air quality. So that's kind of a long response to your question. But that's the that's the initiative to to replace those systems in those 24 schools.
Got a follow-up?
Yeah. Um, so if there's 24 schools that would be slated for improvement, what does that look like at the other? Um, so if there's 24 schools that would be slated for improvement, what does that look like at the other 60-some-odd schools that we have?
So, so the, the other schools are currently, they're, they're electronic. They're, they're on theDDC system. So they, they are not in need of that conversion. And, and again, what, what those schools will get, though, is this conversion from the Apogee management system to DZIGO. Again, it's, it's all about optimizing the, the airflow and temperature in school buildings.
Okay, thank you. Member Higgins, second time around, what you got?
I don't have any additional questions right now.
Okay, thank you. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. In a, in an organization that wasn't so, have such a high percentage of, of labor cost, which is 85% of the total budget going into personnel, I would be trying to find ways to utilize those ESER, the, the impact funds in FY23 to reduce our ongoing operational costs. But I guess it's almost impossible since so much of our ongoing operational costs are just such a high ratio of, of the total. But I'm sure you've thought of that and tried to find things like that. I guess my other, my real question is, can you remind me what the, the teacher-student ratio impact would be of, of that gap that's being projected for FY24? And I would guess that we could just focus on the high schools, because the board's pretty much had a consistent policy for many years to try to not increase the, the elementary grades. So if it was utilized in secondary grades, what would we be looking at?
We, we really didn't do it as if we really would just do PTR, because there would be a lot of other structural changes in the way the district operates. We clearly would look at programs, special programs, structure within the organization, a lot of other things than, I can't imagine we would just look at PTR. So I, I honestly didn't do it.
I was just trying to get a sense of how big a problem that is. And one of the things you can, you know, relate to is the size, the classroom size. And of course, there's a, there's a facilities concern there too, because our classrooms are just not designed to have more than 30 students in them, really. So that's another issue.
Yep. Through the president. And, and remember, years ago, when we were coming, before the one-time monies were given, as you can recall, we, we did suggest some program changes to put more students in the classroom, or to not put more students, but to put more teachers into gen ed classrooms. So we proposed some redesigns, and we thought we were coming to higher class sizes. If you can recall, the over 40 health teachers, you know, that was literally what Jim's talking about in regard to a redesign. And we were taking positions that were outside of the core classroom and putting them, pushing them back in. And so in general, you can say there would be a balance, if you will, of, you know, a few kids added to classrooms, but also programs that we've had in our district for a long time would have to be adjusted as well. You know, whether that's time that the students go to them, whether that's the number of choices of, of music or, or the number of choices of extended day programs and things like that. So in that sense, it really would be closing additional programs or schools and adding students to classrooms. And we did not, at this time specifically, want to, in, in fact, Jim does have, this year, without the ESER funds, it would have been 10 kids in every class to add. That would have been the PTR, but without those ESER funds. But the idea of what we telegraph during these things, in the environment that we have right now of high stress, we just chose not to, to, to go there to stress people out. But, but there, it is, you know, the last thing I want my employees to be doing is, is worrying about money in next year and the year after, and the year after. You know, there, there's already enough stress right now.
A couple, I see you, Mr. Holloman. We'll, we'll close with you in just a minute.
Madam President, but I do want to add that we stress about it a lot. We try to keep the stress away from where the learning's happening. Yeah, so these guys stress quite a bit, but just trying to keep that away from where the learning's happening.
And my twins are going to be in high school those years, so I'm stressing about it also.
So for, when we have our smaller sessions, I would like, I have three things that I'd like to get more information on. One is whether or not there is a grant out there somewhere that we could get for the SRO program. And the other is, we currently do not have SROs in our policy. So do we need to have, what do we need to do to absorb that cost? And I'm not, I'm not sure that, I don't know that we have time for the answer today, but maybe when we get in our smaller, in our smaller groups. And then the other question I had, had to do with, I guess those are the only two, if we can do some follow-up with that. Member Holloman.
I was just going to say, I appreciate the presentation. Yeah, I'd see it as something that focuses on the areas that are critical to us and kind of streamlines. It's not transformational, but I, I don't know any way a district could be transformational without additional funds. I mean, we, we have a lot of different programs. They all mean something to somebody. They, they are all having a positive impact. In my several decades in the Anchorage School District, I never saw people, any significant number of people working or doing something that weren't having a positive impact on some group of students. And, and so unfortunately, if we really try to put resources into a new area to address places that we know we have shortcomings, it means money has to come from something that's working. I don't know how we solve that until, until the funding picture changes in a way that, that lets us be a bit more innovative than we're being. So I appreciate the thought that went into it and all the work by staff. I think it's reasonably clear. It, it is a budget that, provided we do find the funding to, to fill the gaps, doesn't threaten staff, it doesn't threaten existing programs. And, and I think that's a pretty good way to move forward after a couple of years of high uncertainty by so many people in the profession.
Uh-oh. Looks like you froze. Thank you, Mr. Holloman. I think you froze on us. Okay. Anyway, thank you. You guys, I, I mean, I have had like sleepless nights about this budget. I don't know how you did it. It's magical. I thank you. Your slides get better and better every year. I really do appreciate the work that you put into it, and I look forward to my individual consult. So thank you. The last thing on my list for us to take a look at is the superintendent search timeline.
Madam President, may I excuse the folks?
Oh, absolutely.
Would that be all right?
Absolutely.
Those that want to stay can stay.
Yeah, this will probably, hopefully, it won't take but five minutes. Thank you. Thank you again, everybody. So the time, we have a request from the search consultant to extend our schedule by two weeks. And so what you have before you is what that would look like. The extension would really be moving to 19 to 3.5, and then adjusting accordingly. The reason for it is so that one of their primary recruiting events is a superintendent's conference, which falls in the middle of February, the 17th through the 20-something. And so that is, that is the request. Now, I've heard from some of you, but I haven't heard from all of you relative to, you know. But thank you, Katie, for sending this out. Questions? Yay, nay, yes?
Yeah, I, I think I shared with you, and I don't know if, I don't remember if anybody else was on the email. That does happen to be the day of the ceremonial Iditarod start on the, on March 5th. That may or may not matter to anybody else in Anchorage, but it is a festive day. But I guess I also wonder, is the weekend prior too rushed for the consultant?
The weekend?
Like the 26th, 27th? Do they, do they need that extra time to sort of digest?
She indicated she did. So I, I mean, I can go back and ask her if, if she, if the, that would be like the 26th. And yeah. What if we moved it to the 4th?
I mean, I agree that it's not going to be good to go in on the Iditarod for you guys, so I'm there with you as an Alaskan here. Why don't, that whole, because it's 3.5 is a Saturday, why don't, why doesn't 3.5, 2022 fall? And, because it's three, it says week of 3.7. You could do the questions on Monday, which is the 7th. And then, then you could do interviews the rest of the days of the week, because all of these go into each other. You know, just say week of 3.7, you're going to do everything in that block.
Okay.
It's only one extra day.
The 5th would be our, that's a workday, so we need to have that workday, but we could probably do it maybe on the 4th. That's a six. They want at least six hours of our time.
What, what I was saying, you could do that six hours, does it need to be on a weekend?
I don't.
Madam President, we have a joint Assembly School Board meeting on Friday, March 4th, that morning. But I think that the week of the 7th is an interesting idea.
So just do the 7th.
That's true.
Okay.
It's also, I mean, it's a spring break week, but none of us are under the age of 18.
Carl?
Yeah, no, I, I think the, the small tweak we just made works. I don't have any objection.
Okay, so we're going to look at the week of the 7th. Yay. Andy, Dora, week of the 7th for that adjustment. Pat?
Works for me.
This is the right.
Thank you. All right. So you got it, Katie? All right. Thank you, Dr. Bushel. Thank you, everybody. With that, our work session is over.